How's everybody doing?
Doing all right.
Great.
Good.
Okay, I guess we're all here, ready to start?
All right, I'll read the precursor announcement and dive in. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to you this meeting while in progress may do so by going to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of screen, type in the meeting ID, which is, for this one, is 874-9024-6704, and then enter the password 834209, hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with cellphone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at a Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectment@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Okay, welcome to the Select Board meeting Thursday, May 7. And we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance--
Pledge allegiance-- to the flag--
Flag of the United States--
And to the republic--
The republic, for witness and one nation, under God--
Individually-- With liberty and justice--
Justice.
Thank you, it was a bit of a round, but we did it.
Is it breaking up for everybody else too, or is it just me?
It was breaking up for me too.
Oh, okay.
So I--
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. There are no appointments or resignations. There are no hearings. I'm just wondering, this is a special Select Board meeting with a particular agenda item for new business. Do people want to go ahead and have the Select Board report, or do you want to do them next Tuesday?
I would plan on doing, for mine, next Tuesday.
Okay, I'd prefer that too. Are you okay with that, everybody else?
Yeah, I'd rather wait to Tuesday too.
Yep.
Okay. I will ask Ed, though, about any town administrator report.
I'll just briefly do two items. One, if you have not heard, as of today, Governor Baker has allowed golf courses to open under very strict conditions here in Massachusetts. So if you happen to be driving by Southampton Country Club and see people out there now, it is allowed. Massachusetts is not allowing any carts. There's 15 minutes between tee times, no more than four in a group, and no touching any equipment like flagsticks, rakes, benches, what have you. So that came out of the Governor's office today. And then quickly, since an update to the Glendale Road reconstruction project just came across yesterday with a little change in their schedule, I will read that. The Glendale Road reconstruction project will start up again beginning on May 6. Palmer Paving, the paving contractor, is planning to mobilize back to Glendale Road the morning of May 6, which they did. They will begin with some preliminary paving, patching in sidewalks, and driveway curb cut repairs to prepare for placing the final course of paving on the road. They will be paving one lane on the road on Friday, May 8, along with the finish coat on some of the driveway aprits. On Monday, May 11, they will be scheduled to pave the other lane of the road and some of the driveway aprits. This time lane will all be pending upon good weather. Once the second lane of the road has been paved, this final course of paving will have to cure for 72 hours, and then the line striping will be scheduled to occur on Friday, May 15, and Monday, May 18. Once again, pending good weather. The detour that was previously in place will continue starting on May 6 through the end of the next week. And that's all I've got.
Great. Anybody have any questions about the town administrative report?
No.
Okay. I'm going to ask if people have any suggestions as far as the agenda for next week. I have a draft agenda, but I know that there's been a number of emails that we've gotten, for example, about the bridge and some other things. So after we handle the main reason we're meeting, I will ask people if they would like to contribute anything towards the agenda. So the main reason that we're meeting is new business, and that is the approval and signing of the bonding and state house note borrowing for the water department refinancing, the highway dump truck, the police and fire vehicles, and the William Norris Elementary School facility improvements. So do you want to walk us through those documents and rates, Ed?
Sure, and there are two separate distinct items we'll need motions and votes on. The first being the, what I call a bond anticipation note totaling $190,658, which is made up of the $97,800 for the Norris School repairs, $46,672,000 for the police SUV, and $46,186 for the fire SUV. And because of the current market out there, they have not been getting much interest back on multi-year state house notes, which we were originally going to do for this. So instead, we're going to do a one-year bond anticipation note through the municipal state house program. And the low bidder for this is Greenfield Cooperative Bank at a rate of 1.20%. The other bidders on this particular issue were Easthampton's Cleveland's Bank at 1.25%, Adams Building Bank at 1.40%, Newbury Paulson Savings Bank at 1.44%, and People's Bank at 1.50%.
Okay, I heard all that, and I have the document. Did everybody else hear that? There's a little bit of an ad, at least when I hear you. Is everybody else hearing him okay?
Yes.
I cut out for a minute there.
Okay. Okay, so what questions people have about the rates and the bids? Anything?
No, I think the rate is really good. It's great.
Yeah, 1.2, it's incredible.
So then what happens at the end of a year, then? I'm missing a point here, I think.
Well, no, we would either renew it as a ban again, or hopefully the market will have changed and that we will be able to utilize a multi-year state house note at that time instead of renewing it every year.
Got it.
Any other questions about it? Anybody have any questions about the actual, what's being funded out of this? I mean, it's all been approved by town meeting, but does anybody have any questions about the items that are being funded?
No.
No? Nope? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, then?
I move to approve the bond anticipation notice note for $190,658.
I'll second it.
To Greenfield Cooperative Bank.
Right, 1.20%.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Groden, aye.
Roll and die.
All right.
And who seconded that one, please?
Chris.
Okay.
By the way, I was wondering, is Kathy Ingram available for minutes?
Yes, she has been doing some.
Okay. Okay, you want to walk us through the second item?
Okay. The large one is a general obligation bond in the amount of $2,455,000. And the low bidder on this one was Piper Sandler &amp; Company at a true interest cost of 1.918002%. And the other bidders on it were BNY Mellon Capital Markets at 2.245076%, Robert W. Beard &amp; Company, Inc. at 2.342576%, UBS Financial Services, Inc. at 2.372778%, and Bernardi Securities, Inc. at 2.513083%. And let's see if I pull out what this one is made of, because it is a number of different items, and actually, the items are not all for the same term as far as the years go. So some of them fall off before others do. So let's see. All right, thanks for bearing with me. I've got a stack of papers in front of me that's about six inches high. So this one is made up of, let's see, $1 million and $30,000, and was a vote of the town passed on June 22, 2017, Articles 1 and 2. And my memory, that is for water infrastructure improvements. $440,000 from a vote of the town passed May 7, 2019, which is the CPC borrowing for 10 years for the Palmeroy Meadow Road property. And let's see, this actually doesn't have all the detail I want on it. $458,000 for refunding on a current base town, $665,000 USDA water bonds dated October 1, 1997, maturing on and after October 1, 2020, and the aggregate principal amounts of $436,881.49. $277,000 refunding on a current basis, the town's $470,000 USDA water bonds dated April 6, 1995, maturing on and after April 6, 2021, and the aggregate principal amount of $273,233.55. The refunded 1995 bonds and together with the refunded 1997 bonds, the refunded notes. And then $250,000 for purchasing a new dump truck with plow and sander body, which was authorized at the May 7, 2019 annual town meeting.
Okay, what questions does people have?
Just looking at the years assigned with dollar amounts that are prescribed in the first page of that document, that's the amount we pay per year, including the interest-- 2021, 2022.
Pardon? That's the principal amount, I believe, but hang on, let me take a look.
Okay, it doesn't include the interest?
Yeah.
Okay.
And those interest rates that you're looking at are the coupon rates, which are on the bonds. So our cost is less than that, the true interest cost is that 1.918%.
Which is great, too.
Let me just bear in mind--
Because we're going all the way out to 2036, according to this chart.
Yes, there's some of those--
Yep.
--water infrastructure costs.
Yes, yep.
But the CPC one will drop off a lot earlier.
That one drops off in 10 years. The dump truck would drop off before that also.
So each of these ads that are saying like $185,000, and then the next one is $190,000 or whatever, am I understanding that that's the yearly amount to be paid--
Yes.
--for everything, right?
That's what matures in each year, all together, combined.
For everybody, okay.
That looks very doable when you stretch it out over this amount of time, if the interest remains low.
Well, in this particular case, it's tied in, so those interest rates on these bonds, once we approve it, they will not change. I mean, the interest rate theoretically could, in the outside market, could rise or fall above that, but it won't affect us on these particular ones that are already sold.
They're all fixed.
Right. If the town went out again, you know, and bonded for something else, the rates may be different, whether it be in six months or a year or what have you.
Okay.
And just to ask a question, because I'm not familiar with this process, the ones that are being refunded are because we had intended, we had thought we would spend more, or we had put out a bond for more, and actually, the project cost came in at a lesser value? Is that right?
No, the ones that are being refunded were actually loans that we already had. But when Unibank and Cleveland's Kaiser took a look at some of those loans, they felt that by refinancing them, paying them off and refinancing them, that the cost to the town, the interest rate--
Less.
--would actually be less.
Got it, okay.
And then, and in this particular case, they were actually anticipating that we would save about $150,000 in costs over that period--
Great.
--by refinancing.
I have a question about the Palmeroy Meadow land. So when this got passed for the Palmeroy Meadow land, the plan was that we would be borrowing against future CPC funding.
Correct.
Right, so if we're actually, you know, basically, this is set up for $440,000, right?
Correct.
So how does that work? Does this put a stop on CPC funding for other projects? Are there some way that we're restricting any requests from CPC? I know they're still granting requests.
That's a good question.
And they're bringing it to town meeting, like, for example, the two pickleball courts. So is there a plan from that committee to parse out $440,000 of future earnings and not commit them or support them?
That's a good question.
Well, they know that of the, shall we say, future revenues from that, that approximately, you know, $45,000 per year will be taken out of those future revenues, and they won't be able to use those in future years. Monies that they are appropriating from of funding that is already in, like, the undesignated account or one of those accounts that the funding already exists, that money's there and can be used.
Yeah.
Right, but this money was, should be in the bucket of open space, right? They can't just use it for whatever, they can't use the housing accrual, right?
No, like I said, this would be coming, and I'm just going to throw out the example, because it's easy dollar amounts. And say, for example, under normal conditions, the town, from the local revenues on that 3% were $100,000. $45,000 of every year for the next 10 years would be coming off that $100,000 that is available to be dispersed. So you'd have $55,000 left to be divided up into open space, historic, undesignated, and housing.
That does not include the portion we get from, the amount we get each year from the state?
No, this has to be committed out of our--
Out of our money, okay.
--out of anything from the state.
Now, the committee and Bickie are aware of that, and that this money will be, the money that we're getting to fund this, that they'll be, they're aware that this $45,000 or whatever is, needs to be allocated towards this open space, towards the Palmeroy Meadow project?
Correct.
I think one thing that CPC was wondering when we last met was whether or not there could be or should be just a separate line in the budget under the CPC category to note, you know, for this bond money, just so that we could keep, you know, better track of it and have it, you know, visible as a separate line, just so that we don't, you know, draw into something that we didn't intend to. So that might be something to discuss future, I don't know.
Yeah, and it would get recorded under debt, and there may be able to be a subcategory under debt for principal and interest, just for those costs that are coming from CPC.
Can the committee request that of the accountant?
Sure.
I think that'd be a great thing, because I know that, you know, five years from now, there'll be different people on the committee, and it just seems like something that could get lost. It should be separate, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Be easier to track it, I think, in the long run. I mean, it's, it'd be better.
Yeah, especially since this is the first time it was actually sort of overspent of existing.
Right. And I think we're expecting--
Plus, if we ever got an audit, it would be clearly spelled out there.
Yeah. And I think they're already, you know, expecting that there's an interest payment due this calendar year, if I'm not mistaken. It'd be a first interest payment due, maybe, later in November or something, if I'm not mistaken.
Hmm, I'm not sure on that.
Or maybe not, but anyway, but yeah, that will help to have it laid out a little bit more clearly, sure.
Okay, well, back to the second vote there. Does anybody have any other questions about the rates?
Claire, can you bring the Wi-Fi, please?
What's that?
No.
Who was that?
Nothing, where's that?
Somebody said something about Wi-Fi?
Oh, sorry. That was me in the background. My Wi-Fi is kicking out because the Wi-Fi is sitting in the other room, so I just asked my wife to bring it in. I think you heard that.
Oh, okay, that's no problem. Any other questions about--
At one point, there was a message on yours that said you had low bandwidth.
Yeah.
Oh. Does anybody have any questions about what's being funded, the rate, the bid, anything? Then let's go ahead and vote, then. We have a motion and a second. Did you get those, Ed?
No.
I thought we had a vote, no? Do we have a--
I don't think so.
Okay, who would like to make a motion, then?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. So I think it's a total amount, we should probably have that there.
$2,455,000 general obligation bond to be awarded to Piper Sandler &amp; Company at a total interest cost of 1.918002.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? And then a roll call vote?
Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Roll and die.
Martin, aye.
Groden, aye.
And who seconded that, please?
Uh, me again.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I didn't hear that one.
Hey, Ed, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I was at another Zoom meeting earlier this week. The question is on when they take a vote. Does it have to be a roll call vote, and if so, did we get that from legal, or is that just something we put in effect?
My memory was that it was actually part of the Governor's order, but I will double check on that.
Yeah, and then we can pass it out to the other committees, because they weren't aware of that, so I just wanted to check.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying to find amongst my millions of emails, going back to the agenda. I think that's pretty much all we had on there. Any other business that can't wait until Tuesday's meeting, which is the 12th, I believe?
I just had a question. I think we could discuss it more on Tuesday, if we can. There was an article in today's Gazette about the initiative that the North Hampton Public Health Group has been taking in terms of establishing a contact tracing program with the public health nurses up there, and how they've banded together with, I don't know, eight or nine other nurses, apparently, to put a kind of a collaborative effort together. And it's including some 10 towns, or they've contacted the boards of health of about 10 different towns. And I found it kind of odd that Southampton was not part of it. So that was a question I had, and would like to hear more about that, but maybe, until we meet on Tuesday, when we've got more time to discuss it more fully.
Yeah, just so you know, we are part of another district. It includes South Hadley and I think Hadley. And the case tracing is going very well. So we're using this, we are part of a regional collaborative, it just doesn't include the same towns that North Hampton and the large number of them are.
Okay, well, that's interesting, because that one was started by North Hampton, but it included East Hampton and West Hampton, too. Now, what happened to Southampton?
There were, what is it, is it Hadley and South Hadley, Ed?
Hadley, South Hadley, Southampton, and--
The Granby?
I don't think it was Granby, but there is at least one other.
Okay, well, good, now that's--
Is it Gaffield?
Yes, yes, that's it, thank you.
No, that's helpful to know, yeah, because that kind of stuck out at me, like, what happened to us? Yeah, great.
That's what I thought initially, but based on the board of health meeting that happened, was it yesterday or the day before, it's actually going very well. The case tracing is going very well with that particular collaborative.
Great.
Yeah. So does anybody have any other agenda items before--
I've got one item, just because it's time sensitive, on the building commissioner.
Yeah.
I met today with the mayor of East Hampton and the building commissioner about the possibility of looking into going to a shared service with Southampton and East Hampton, and they're very much interested. And so then I contacted the chair of the Select Board in West Hampton and told them about the meeting, and he said he's very much interested also. So what I'd like to do is get an okay to set up another meeting and talk more details. We just did it on the periphery. I told them what we were doing, how we handled it, what we were looking for in general, you know, the hours, and the same with West Hampton, and they gave us some background on their building commissioner and their department on there, but there was a definite interest on their side as well. So I'd like to set a meeting, include the West Hampton representative, as well as us here and East Hampton, and set up a Zoom meeting to go into more detail.
Sounds great.
So that would be, that would be for the commissioner or the commissioner and inspector services?
Well, that's what we want to discuss, because--
Okay.
Just in general sense, if there is a commissioner leading the overall shared services, each town doesn't need a commissioner.
Right.
You know, that's on, commissioner is on the compliance side of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can explore those, look at costs, you know, benefit ratio there and, and the, the mayor and myself both said that this needs to work from an economic point of view for, for everybody, obviously. But they, they were willing to talk about it some more and go forward. Like I said, West Hampton is too, so I don't want to lose track of this because we're without a building commissioner.
Right.
Just from a logistical, logistical point of view, suppose we had a three-way agreement like that, is that really a possibility for one person to carry out those tasks in three different?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely not. I mean, there's a lot of scenarios I can think of, but one of them, the popular one, is we could have a lead community, say East Hampton, where they had a commissioner and one or two inspectors that work under the commissioner. And these inspectors would have office hours at the different towns, depending on how much we need them. And a good thing about that, having a department, is you got backup. So if our person was out, they have other people that come in and fill in that day. So we never have a, an off day. And then we can also look at how many days a week do we need, what are the hours? We can look at all of that again.
Yeah, and did we actually post our position, our opening already, or not?
Yeah, we posted it, when was it, Monday, Ed, or, yeah, Monday, right?
Yeah, yes, Monday.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we're going to keep everything going at once. I just want to make sure we stay on the parallel tracks.
And remind me, what was the last date for Tom?
Last Friday.
Last, well, he was actually in on Sunday, so he started his new job on the 4th. And he's actually been in twice already for doing some inspections. He was in Monday night and he was actually in shortly, just before this meeting started.
Yeah.
Do you have a need for using our, you know, backup building inspector?
Our alternate, yeah, but basically, and I should add it to, actually, the, the May 12th agenda is we probably actually want to now appoint Tom as an alternate building inspector, just like Ron Lauren is an alternate building inspector and Jonathan Flag, just to make it official.
Okay.
Good idea.
Did you want to say something, Francine?
No.
Okay. So I think there should be a vote, maybe, or do you think that we need to have a vote? Because I know we did authorize you, John, to go ahead and, you know, to work with East Hampton, I mean, West Hampton, but it might be a good idea to just have a motion to authorize John to continue to pursue opportunities for variety of configurations of our building commissioner?
Yeah, you did authorize me to work with, go, reach out to the local communities to do it. And, and East Hampton's probably the best community to start with. Westfield, I reached out, but I haven't received anything yet. But Westfield's a kind of a different animal, if you will, the size and everything and the distance, where East Hampton and West Hampton are kind of right in that same core area, in my opinion, but.
Okay, so you're, then go.
Just a quick question, what does East Hampton have now? Do they have a commissioner or just an inspector?
Yeah, they have a commissioner, he is a, I forget the right term. He's two courses short of being a full commissioner, but he has designation from the state to do all commissioner duties. And he also brings in the state building commissioner if, if he's needed. He's a provisional commissioner is the term he used, but he can perform all the duties and he's going through the classes to get it. And Tom, that's what happened with Tom, too. I think Tom was short, what about four courses, Ed, when he came?
I wasn't here, I know he was short some courses, so I don't, I, for some reason, I thought I had heard it was maybe three, but I could be wrong.
Yes, some number, and what we did with him is he had to get it within X amount of time on the job, and he did that.
Now, do they have that, do they have that same requirement due time for the individual who's the provisional commissioner in East Hampton?
I'm sorry, I don't know if they have that technically, but he is going through it, the mayor said, yes, he's going through it, so, yeah.
Okay.
And to lead a department, you need to be a commissioner if you don't want to have, have to go outside the area to get a commissioner to help you out.
No, I think it's great that we, hopefully, will have some options to consider.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'll get back to you a little more once I set up the next meeting.
Okay, thanks for doing that, John. Is there any other business that you want to talk about before Tuesday's meeting? Okay, I was reviewing the draft agenda that Ed sent to me yesterday and Ed, I will write back after this meeting, but I just wanted to ask the group because there's been a number of emails that I've gotten in from the council aging meeting yesterday, there were a couple of things that came up. So on the agenda is the Boston Post came. We want to go ahead and acknowledge the elder resident town. And then we'll make arrangements in the future to actually present it to her. The building commissioner, VHB, we got some communication from VHB relative to the third-party review. I don't know if there are any updates on the water pipe on Route 10, the budget review, so expenditures and revenue, but also are we still presuming a 112 budget? Are there any budget meetings, that sort of thing? All the dates in the election and the caucus and the special legislation and COVID obviously is an important item. I really do want to keep that disability insurance, you know, that came up yesterday with the COA budget. You know, any one department that has somebody with short-term disability gets hit hard in their budget. And Janet reminded me that this has been a agenda item for PQB about four years ago. So we really have to continue to make decisions about this and take whatever steps. We also have to have the continued finalized bid on the College Highway property, the farm property. Is there anything else that people feel should be on the agenda for next time?
Just, just an update in terms of where we are with the open space update plan?
Yeah, I actually just.
You know, if we have a consultant who's working with us or are we changing consultants or, you know, is there a meeting to be scheduled soon so we can take advantage of it?
Yep.
Yeah, Rini emailed me about that.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, assuming that there are conversations going on among and between the different department heads about how eventually we will become re-engaged and what the process might be that we would want to implement?
We're, we're starting that process, there's so much up in the air, it's a little bit ambiguity, some's going to be guesswork and what have you.
Right.
You know, I, I personally don't see us jumping right in and going back to normal on A1 and it's going to be phased in and I think there's going to have to be some precautions and some different business routines put into play for a while.
Yeah, and I know it all depends on what the, you know, the parameters the state puts in, but anticipating what some of them might be, you know, how, and not wait till the last minute to put something together, but have this thoughtful consideration, you know, well in advance of when we have to, when we, when we will be doing it.
Certainly.
Now, we also looking at, in line with that, everywhere you go now, they have some sort of Plexiglas screen in front of them. When I was in there signing today, I popped my head in the assessor's office to say hi from 25 feet away and, which hit me saying, that would be a good place to have Plexi in there and maybe in, you know, the clerk's office and all that. And that takes time to get, so is that something somebody could research? And I've got to figure out if we need that?
I've already started and, and obviously, if we continue doing business like we are today, it's probably less of an issue, but as we gradually move forward, you know, one of the things that I had thought about implementing was any of the offices that had counters, you know, much like the town clerk's office, the assessor's office, the building.
Building Commissioner.
Office. I mean, the, the treasurer collector's office does have that outside window, so that's, that's an option. But I think of any type of offices that's doing that type of work and has, you know, that type of space, that it would be a very good addition to look at.
Yeah, and I mean, we may want to limit access into, say, the assessor's office, similar to extending the treasurer's office, maybe just have a Dutch door type with a screen coming down so people don't walk into the room, you know? I, I don't know, it's just, there's, it seems to be a lot of ideas out there that folks.
Yeah, those are fairly expensive building improvements to, to change, you know, versus whether it's a temporary or more permanent Plexiglas type, type piece, but.
Well, I know that some of the funding we got from DPH 9,000 went to the Board of Health. And at the last meeting, they discussed the spending of that, which, you know, surprised me frankly, that it was all future-based, that they haven't incurred that much in the expense up till now. But nonetheless, there are, there is more funding coming in, right, Ed? That will come directly into the town hall. That would be a very good, between Bi-Rex, like cleaning supplies and also Plexiglas. I mean, I think this could be the time to really to do all those things with the expectation that that would be what we'd be using the funding for. What's up?
Okay, no.
I didn't hear you, Francine.
I, I think Chris was going to speak.
No, you were totally broken up, Rini, we didn't hear anything yet.
Ed, do you remember those old Max Headroom commercials where it goes, the, 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 the stutters? That's how you were coming across.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
No.
We, we can, but it sounds like you're.
Saying is that there is more funding coming in to, yeah, I'm getting it, yeah.
And, and that funding is supposed to be much more general in, in how it is able to be used than that original funding that came in through the DPH.
Yeah.
You know, just, just one thought, we were talking about it's going to cost us a few dollars to do this versus that. I, I think whatever it costs us, we've got to find it because we don't want our staff to, you know, have to open up again and not feel 100% confident that we're doing all that we can for them, you know? So even if we have to come up with tens of thousands of dollars, whatever number it is, I think we, we owe it to the staff to really investigate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, John, I like your idea of having a Dutch door so that people just don't go into the entire office space.
Yeah, and you could hang a Plexi front of that and just have like, you know, underneath. But whatever, there's a lot of ideas, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, because some of the desks are pretty wide and open, some of the areas.
Right, and the counter spaces.
Right.
Right, right. So any other suggestions for next Tuesday? I'll send you an email back about that, Ed. And obviously, the building commissioner will be back on it. Anything else? No? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn then?
Sure, I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Then I'll second.
John and Francine?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Tishman eye?
Alva.
Roland eye?
Martin eye?
Groden eye? And there were no questions that came in, right? We don't have any questions that we have to address, okay.
So thank you all and I hope you all have a good evening.
Yeah, you too, take care.
Night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.